Yeah, so I guess.
Just start.
Welcome to the joint boards meeting of the town building committee and the Westford J V Fletcher Library Board of Trustees this finite of September eighth twenty twenty five. Reminder that the meeting is being recorded. So anything said or any notes into the chat become part of the public record. And with that, I believe our agenda. Starts with soon as I can open it up here.
Attendance.
Attendance, right. So if Buffy you be so kind as to call both roles.
Yep. So Dirks is here Fleckner.
Here.
Roach. Not here yet. Uh, C core.
Here.
Thank you. Siegel.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Isleton.
Here.
Karpinski.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wimber.
Here.
Zegowitz. Not here. Okay. Um.
Zig won't be on. He emailed me before the meeting, just like he can't attend. So you can mark him absent.
Okay. Mike Berlinsky is not here. Beth Perkins.
Here.
Leedberg.
Here.
Rainville.
Here.
Lass.
Here.
Edwards. Not here tonight. Goodwin.
Here.
McCrory.
Here.
Lucides. Didn't I see Mark?
Mark is here, but he was having some um, his phone was, he's on here. It just, he was having some phone issues. He texted me.
All right, then he is under the attendees. That are over on the right. Is he six one seven four eight six or four four?
On on mine, his name shows up, but I.
But that is.
I think he's also dialed in by phone. Yes.
So that that's Mark. I'll put him down. Fabriere.
I'm here.
Oh, thank you. This is why we take attendance. Ansalone.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Okay, thank you. Um, so.
Nope. Nope. It's just me from F A Bucky.
Okay, thank you. And. Geniu or Bono bunker? No. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Mike, do you want to take over now?
If you could give me another like fifteen minutes, then I'm good to go.
Okay, so next up is the approval of minutes from our August eleventh meeting. Has anyone had a chance to review? And are there any? Um, edits to discuss?
They looked good.
Okay, does any hands? Is there motion to approve the minutes of August eleventh?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second gene.
Okay, so Chris is the motion Nancy is the second. So Buffy, please make us all go on the record.
Okay, so Scott you absent and Tom Wimberg was absent. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so Dirks I Fleckner.
Hi.
Is Roach not here yet? Okay. Uh, C core.
I.
Siegel.
Hi.
Teal.
Hi.
Cook.
I.
Isleton.
Was I? I was here, right?
No, I have you as absent.
Okay, I abstain.
Okay.
I know I knew it was in Chicago about then. I wasn't quite sure when or not. So, okay.
You came late to that meeting, Scott.
Yeah, it's got you logged on, but not until late.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah.
It's like, I don't know, seven fifteen or something.
I had you on at six forty five, so we'd already.
Okay, so I will. I will vote yes.
Okay. Uh, Karpinski.
Yes.
Patton.
All right, yes.
Roberts.
Hi.
And Wimberg was definitely absent, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and Zegowitz is not here. So let me see, one, two. Ten zero one.
Okay, thanks. Next up is the report from the architects and FAA and. I guess whoever's taking the lead on that one tonight.
Scott, that's gonna be me. And I am going to take over screen sharing for a few minutes.
Okay.
Um.
You'll do you'll do O P M while you're ready.
Uh, yes, it will be. Um, so. Um, before I jump in speaking, can people see my screen? You blow it up? Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna blow it up as well, just so everyone knows it's. Um, so this is a report that will be submitted to the M B L C. Um, and to the town. But where we are right now in the progress of construction, um. We have, in the month of August, we had some major items completed, including the our tank installation, which is the retention tank installation. You saw some progress photos of that last month, but it's complete now. Um, we completed the west wing slab demolition and the level three stair landing demolition. You'll see some photos of that coming up shortly. And then excavation work for exterior footings and the foundation wall of the new addition. So you'll also see some photos momentarily of that. Um, and there are also some. Major activities that are happening now and will continue to go through the month of September. Um, the elevator shaft being demolished. Um, foundation wall and damp roofing, et cetera, being removed. Um, perimeter drains are being installed throughout, and then also we're preparing the M E P or mechanical, electrical and plumbing trench lines for things that are. Underneath the slab and then in the east wing demolition continues. Um, we, as we've mentioned before, this is an extremely volatile time on the job site, so. Safety precautions are critical to maintain. Um, and you'll see later on, there is no safety issues to report this month. Um, and. So continuing onward, our project budget reports, we. Um, this will be submitted, but the the real bulk of this is that we've had about sixty seven thousand dollars in change orders. Seven have been approved. Um, and two are pending approval. Right now, we still have a contingency balance of almost two million dollars. Um, and. Um, this is a summary of those. Um. Uh, change orders that we have. Um, outstanding, we have talked about some of these last month, and we have two. Um, additional ones that are under review right now for some additional abatement that was detected, as well as lighting pole base. Um, that was damaged and needed to be removed at the front of the library. Um. The project remains tracking on schedule, so really isn't much to update specifically on schedule. We maintain. Um, we we discuss the schedule with the contractor weekly at our O A C meetings. Um, but these are, I was just mentioning some of the major upcoming tasks. So if you happen to be seeing any of the progress over there. Um, demolition is really wrapping up and we're moving to concrete pouring now related to our footings and foundations. Um, and the Fine Gold Alexander team continues to work through all of the submittals. Um, we are up to hundred and seventy six different submittals, and as a team, we're working with Hutter to prioritize them and the. Um. Um, Hutter team reports on a weekly basis and those. Um, the Fine Gold team is working diligently to maintain those in the. There's a lot of them to be done, but they are working to prioritize them aligned with Hutter, and that process is going really well. Um, and then similarly with R F I's. Um, we've got a similar number of R F I's that are going on the project. Um, and those continue to be. Um. Worked through as necessary. And as I mentioned, safety, there were nothing to report. Um, you'll be seeing in the joint packet that the incident report for the previous safety event that happened is included in this month's joint packet, as well as some safety reports. That was a request of the joint committee team. So that is included in your packet. Um, but here's where we get exciting stuff. These are some photographs, and so this is. What you can now see of this stormwater retention system, the R tank system, it is buried underground, so you can no longer see it. Um, but that work has been fully completed, and importantly, the town of Westford had multiple inspections of this work. Um, ongoing through the process and also before we close that up. Um, this is some site work and I, Ellen, this is the photograph I think might want to be on the website. Um, you can see demolition, and then also the prep work for the footings. Um, as they're going in. So there's quite a lot going on in this photograph. Um, it's very exciting. So now you really get to see, I think, the scale of the new addition and how much further out it comes from the old building. Um, this is some foundation wall and footings after they have been poured. So that first photo was an earlier shot, and this is. A more. A current shot of that. This is the driveway entrance as you entered the parking lot of the building. So you're looking back up to Main Street in this photograph. And this is some slab demolition that's in progress and. Um, you can see the original older library next to one of the additions from the. Um, the previous editions of the building. And then this is the west wing of the library, some additional demolition progress, and that is the summary report of the activity. Um, I'll stop here for any questions people might have.
Is the red brick the, um, is that red brick? And is that from the eighteen sixty three version?
I think that is from the nineteen sixties edition, I believe, but Ellen might know, and I think.
That that actually was covered by um, by the roof line. So. Within the attic itself, there's red brick, Mary Ann, and that used to be covered by the roof and the attic walls. So that was the roof line that went over the stack area. If you had ever crawled up into the attic, it's the only place you saw red brick on the interior. So it's been covered by. Um, exterior walls all this time.
Wow, thank you. So cool.
I don't see any more hands, so I guess you can continue.
Um, well, I'm gonna stop sharing from that. Um, and. I think that 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 really summarizes the architect and the O P M report, but I will pause here. Leah, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Well, I think that was a great summary. Jennifer thinks as she noted, things are really cranking now. It's exciting now that the demo is basically complete and we're focusing on. Construction for real.
Yes.
Moving faster.
Okay, so I think you're up next for the.
I can take over here, Scott. And then Jennifer, just a quick question. Were the change requests that are pending included in this packet? I don't think so, right? Those won't be included until they're formalized?
Um, that's correct. Um, yes, they're right now within some review of. Um, the smaller committee, which includes Chris Karpinski, Mike Edwards, Kristen Lass. We're reviewing those now.
Okay, and I know it was small dollars, but. I think you said damaged light posts, but then the agenda just says remove removal of light posts. Can you just clarify that? Because if it was damaged by a trade, shouldn't, why should we pay for that?
Yeah, can I jump in, Jennifer?
Yes, please.
So this was a light post that was damaged in a windstorm prior to Hutter taking.
Not during construction.
No, not during construction, but they are helping us out by because it is not needed for the future design. So they were. Taking care of the work to make the condition safe, remove the post and remove the footing, and that's what the cost is for.
That makes total sense then. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Okay, Ellen, do you have any updates on the library director side?
I think I think Mary Ann's hand is up too.
Sorry, sorry.
Oh.
I get just one other quick question. Is R F I, is that request for information?
Yes. Okay. That's a very common. Go ahead. Sorry.
No, yeah, that was my question is that generally who do they come from?
Um, so we have a process of it, and this is not specific to the J V Fletcher Library. This is really probably within any construction process. So as the contractor or any subcontractors have questions, the contractor assembles them and they. Um, they request them to the architect. So it could be a structural engineering question. In that instance, the architect would forward that to the structural engineer. It also could be a question for the town. The purpose of that is that everything is really tracked and all of these questions are. Recorded and tracked so that later on, we have a clear record of all of them being asked, and it really prevents. Um, the process of just someone picking up a phone and saying, hey, I don't know what to do here and. Um, and we formalize it. It does add some time to that process, but it's really important that things get tracked that way and. Um. And it's also typically. Um. Um, it happens during the bidding process, and so we have those those are referred to as bidding R F I's, and we had. Leah, I think over a hundred of them throughout the bidding process, but when we award the construction, we start again at one. And these are official R F I's during the construction process.
Great, thank you so much.
Welcome.
All right, miss you, Mary Ann. Ellen, you said you had an update?
So I I just want to thank Jean Roberts, who has spent so many hours with us. Um, we've made a lot of process. Um, progress with furnishings, fixtures and equipment. Um, we spent half a day Friday. Uh, sitting on sample chairs and looking at fabrics and determining what we would like to see in the children's room, the young adult teen area. Uh, the adult study spaces and the historic browsing rooms of the library. Um, we are working on the A V for, um, this is another group for the. Uh, level one meeting room and the conference rooms on the third floor. Um, I'm starting to work with Stifura and Creative Library Concepts. Um, we we have done an item count of everything that has to come back on shelving, and I need to start working with them on slatted shelving, slanted shelving, display. Shelving, all of that, um, which has to match up as we, you know, put a hundred thousand books back into the new building. So all that's very exciting. Some of that's fun, some of that's tedious, but all of these things are being worked on now. Uh, as well, I'm I'm researching a new whoop-de-doo drive-through book drop, you know, with two different return sections. And new patron counting software. Um, there it's been planned for in the building, but they're improving that all the time. Uh, that's another thing which is much more sophisticated than it has been in the past. So. Um, all of these are exciting things as as well as we're starting to. Um. Itemize exactly the technology that we need to bring back to the new building. Of course, a lot of it we have right now at the temporary site. And, um, a lot of what we'll need to get rid of yet again. Uh, as we leave the temporary site and move into the new building. So I'm starting to work on it backwards. Uh, on a reverse of planning calendar for all of that that needs to be happening at least six months before we move back in.
I wanted to add one other thing that I forgot to mention, and I'm sorry, it's not in this report, and I think I'll add it in there, but um. The other item that was fully installed in the month of August, if people may or may not be aware, we installed. Um, some water detection and other temporary protection items that happened during the construction process. Um, this is something that the town was overseeing. Um, it's not a Hutter construction process, but it's part of your. Um, builder's risk insurance, and so there is an entire water detection system put in. Um, for example, the most common. Problem that can happen on a construction site is somehow water. Water leaks in some way, and we have water detection, other security devices installed around the construction site. And that process has been complete and the systems are installed, and these are now quite high tech and. They notify people through and through their phones and through other methodologies, but. That process has been complete. You're going to see an invoice related to it. That's what prompted my my recollection of this.
And maybe I'll just add on the on the second page, would we, when we look at. Um. The budget summary from my accounts posting, you're going to see insurance has gone negative, and that's because I put. That cost under insurance and we'll. We could discuss whether that's the right place. It didn't seem to me like it was testing or commissioning because our insurance company insisted on it. Um, I put it there, and if you agree with that, I'll move money from the contingency fund into that amount. So.
Scott is moving that budget, something we need to vote on, or is that just something that can be done?
Well, maybe we could vote on it when we look at the, um, when when we get to this page and and look at the budget. I wanted to just. Report you how I'm posting this because it's important that you agree with it before I go any further.
Okay, yeah, we'll discuss when we get to that point. That sounds like a plan. Anything else, Alan, on the library director update, or do we want to move to the approvals?
I think we're good. I'm, I just want to thank Jeff and Macaja from Fine Gold Alexander. I'm starting to get operating and maintenance costs for the future building, which is a complete unknown. So. Uh, I am working on that right now as well for the three-year budget projections.
Okay. Um, on the warrants for the just over a million dollars, does anyone have any questions on A through I? Okay, then, um, do we have a motion to approve section four in the total of one million thirty three, uh, thirty three thousand one hundred twenty six dollars and fifty three cents? So.
Second.
But I know there was a second. I think it was Tom.
Yeah, that's me. I'll second it.
Okay, so Scott and Glenn. That was Scott and Glenn.
That's correct.
Yes.
All right, here we go. Dirks, I Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
C core.
I.
Siegel.
I.
Teal.
Hi.
Hook.
I.
Isleton.
I.
Karpinski.
I.
Patton.
I.
Roberts.
I.
Wimber.
I.
And Zegowitz is not here. Um, one, two, three. Twelve zero zero.
Hey, uh, section five, the agenda. Oh, Buffy, a point of order, just real quick. I think, did you get Roach on the attendance?
I I saw that she had arrived, so yes, I did.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to double check.
Yep, thank you.
So section five, we have some approvals of the proposals, change orders, additional services for the twenty seven thousand eight fifty six. If the concrete removal, window hazardous material remediation, and then just a clarification, Jennifer, this removal of the light post. That change order was listing is pending, but we want to vote on that tonight, correct?
No, all of these three that you're seeing do not require a vote tonight. These are, so item A are the ones that would require a vote, and there are none. Item B, we're just, um, uh, just keeping the joint committee abreast of these items. So these will fall under the fifteen thousand dollar category, and so these are the ones that. Um, Chris Karpinski and Kristen Lass and the design team C H A we're working through. So this is really for your information, no vote required.
Okay, I see it notes that where it says under the fifteen thousand, but should we? Just clarify no vote required, just to make it clear for anyone reading the notes, or I'm fine with it. I'm just tossing it out. For discussion if we want to just write like concrete removal, no vote required, et cetera, just so people know when we have the minutes that it wasn't a voting item. It was just a documentation.
I can put that against B in the future, you know, no vote needed. Yeah. This is the first time I've I've shown it this way on the agenda, and I really did need. The committee, the joint committee to say this is how they'd like to see it reported. If we had something under A, I would put vote in caps in the far right. And I can put no needed or, um, or.
Well, no vote, I think works out. Yeah, just to just to have something, just to bring some clarity. Yeah.
But and I'm always confused by where it says four seconds at the top of the agenda every time. So if we're if we're cleaning things up, we could take care of that, too.
Oh, you know, that's a holdover from the trustee agenda where we have timing on every single line. I'll get rid of that.
That's precise timing like that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so no vote needed on five, and I don't think we have any questions, so we can move on. Uh, Jennifer, you touched on this. You attached the safety incident protocols, site safety, N F P A two forty one. So thank you very much for doing that. Uh, does anyone have any questions on those plans that were attached?
They seem to be pretty complete. I have to admit, I didn't get through exactly everything, but I got through most of it.
Perfect. I read through, uh, I guess my best quick reading I could, and it looked pretty good. It looked like for me, I know I was the one who asked about the safety report and. They kind of documented what happened and really the preventive measures, which is what I was just looking for to make sure we don't have a repeat. So that makes sense. Uh, I think we're in good shape with all of those. Thanks for sharing those, Jennifer. Uh, and then the new business. Um, why don't we skip A? Uh, because that's really just a building committee item, and then we move. Maybe through the rest that need the voting. So Ellen, if anyone wants to jump off from the library side, they can, and then we can finish our meeting.
I think you need to do it now, Mike, because we're sharing this particular Zoom link. So I think the trustee board can just wait.
Okay.
Who?
It's fun.
Recruit your volunteers.
Yeah, so the two items, A, so this is a P T B C item. Item number one, I've been reached out to a little while ago, but we haven't really had our own meeting, so. I wanted to combine it here so we could get this done. The capital planning requires a volunteer from the P T B C to be part of it. Tom Mahanna filled this position. So as you can imagine, this has been vacant since Tom has not been chair. So we were just looking to see if we had a volunteer and then we could vote them in. Um, for this capital planning committee, and on the second item. I just can't commit to the Robinson Building Committee anymore. The meetings are during the day. I know Tom attends, but we need to have two attendees. And it's just too conflicting with my work schedule during the workday, so I'm not able to attend those. So looking for someone to possibly replace me on that committee as well. So Scott, you had your hand up?
I was gonna say, if 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 anybody else wants capital, they're they're, that's fine, but I'll happily happily do it. Um, I've always kind of liked it, but I couldn't do it as a selectman because you had you had two already on it. So now I can. Volunteer with a clear conscience.
Yeah, and also I can volunteer.
Scott, would you be able to do Robinson or?
Like, the beauty of capitals is Friday mornings really sweet. That's a good.
I see.
Yeah.
Got it. So Tom, you're willing to volunteer for it then?
Yeah. On the. But we, the Robinson School is usually at what twelve or twelve thirty?
It's twelve o'clock on Tuesdays, so right during the lunch period. Excuse me. Um, if we can't get someone tonight for that, we can table that. That's not a critical item at the moment, but it is something I would like to address, Tom, because.
Yeah.
We want two volunteers.
Yes, I would like company over there. It we're currently getting the O P M interview. So it'd be good to have somebody who's been through some of this before.
So why don't we start with the capital planning? So Scott, Tom, I mean, Tom, you volunteer for everything, so. Um, I don't want to put too much on your plate. I don't want to put too much on your plate, but you know.
I'm retired.
Yeah. So Scott, do you, do you have any hard feelings? Do you want Tom?
No, that's okay. It's fine.
Or do you want to do it? I'll let you guys decide.
Well, that's, Tom can do it, it's fine.
Okay. So then.
I have a couple of things to do in town.
So I'll officially nominate Tom Winberg for this, and then I believe we just need to have a quick vote.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So Buffy, if you want to just note.
So Mike. You nominated a Nancy.
Correct.
Okay, do you want me to conduct the voting, or are you gonna do that?
I can, I can do that. So Nancy.
I.
Scott.
I.
Chris.
I.
Jean.
I.
And I myself, I know Zagowitz is missing, and then Winberg.
I.
Okay, so that would be six, zero.
Six, zero, zero then?
Yep. And then does anyone want to volunteer for number two? I know during the, during the workday is tough. All right, silence is our answer. We will table that to a separate building committee meeting or address that separately. So we can move on from that. So Buffy, you can just note. Tabled for future building committee meeting.
Okay.
All right, UTS.
Mary Ann has a question before we jump to that.
Oh, no, that's okay. My question's on UTS, so I can wait.
Okay, would it be okay if I spoke to this? So item.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Item B and item C are both related. And later on the packet, you'll see a letter that is from. CHA. We did talk about the window testing a few. Months back when we were hiring the construction testing. So I just want to be clear. We need different types of independent testing for the project and we. You already went through a process of approving a company who has done the construction testing, and that generally means. Concrete testing, steel testing, they test soils and compaction and so forth. Then we have some specialty testing and that is on roofing and window testing. And so we separated this out into a different. Process of bidders. And our reasoning for that is that. In our experience and being CHA as OPMs, we found that. It can be more advantageous for the town because different companies may specialize in these types of things. And so. The low bidder may not be, the low bidder for construction testing may not be the best company to perform. Roof and window testing. So in this process. We did submit an RFP that you all read and approved a few months back. We, we sent that RFP out to ten different testing agencies. We received six responses and we tabulated those responses. In this instance, we received, the lowest bid was from a company called Briggs Engineering. And their bid was sixteen thousand dollars or so. However, they were missing a significant amount of the required documentation. The letter that's attached in your packet, I believe it's. Page sixty-six of the attachments. Lists out all of those components that were missing. And so with that. We could not accept them because it was a significant amount of the required documentation. The second low bidder, which is a company called Thompson and Lickner, whose value was twenty-three thousand or so. Also had an incomplete submission and they were missing a number of required documents as well. So we ended up turning to the third bidder and that value was twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. That company is UTS of Massachusetts. If their name sounds familiar, it's because it is the company who. We selected as the low bidder for the concrete testing and the other types of testing, the construction testing, rather. I'd like everyone to know that they have been on the site and they have been successfully performing that work. We have. Been building a relationship with them for this project. It has been successful to date. You should also know that we at CHA, as well as Hutter, we have worked with UTS on multiple projects in the past with. And they've been qualified for that. So. We, we are recommending that they be considered the awarded bidder for this. And just so everyone is aware of the process, this joint committee would make a recommendation for that, and then it does still need to go to the select board. For this approval. So in terms of the timing, we have identified a select board meeting in the future. That this would be on the agenda for and the timing of that, we. We don't have any issue with this. This testing has to be done when new roofing and. New windows are installed and you just saw in the photographs that we're still in foundation work, so there's a little bit of time. There is a second issue, which is item C. And they will need separate votes, but I just want to speak to that. This is both covered in the same letter. That's page sixty-six of the attachment. We had a budget of fifteen thousand dollars for this in our budget and the. We came back with the lowest bid at twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. And that is for a quantity of one test for each of the types of tests, and we know we're going to need more than one test. Of certain types. So for example, the window tests, we test more than one window. And so we are making the second part, item C, is to make a recommendation of. That we increase the budget for window testing not to exceed fifty thousand dollars and we transfer thirty-five thousand dollars of contingency. To that line item. So that is. That is item B and C. There is a letter attached that explains all of that in depth. But I'll pause there because I think Mary Ann has a question related to this.
No, you know what? Thank you so much. You answered both. My first one was with the same UTS company of the concrete testing and the second was. What was the original amount? I couldn't remember, but you mentioned the fifteen thousand. So thank you.
Thank you. I think also part of the reason why I think the budget, we, we originally did not include roof testing. And we expanded our scope to include roof testing because of your prior. Issues with especially the fire station. So our initial budget had been for window testing and now we're doing window and roof testing. I think that is a wise choice for this project, but that is, we did not increase the budget at that time. And now that we know where we stand with this. We, that is a big reason for the increase. Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, what, can you go into a little bit more about the documentation that was missing from the other two bids?
Sure, I'm gonna, if, if it's okay, I'd like to just share my screen because I, I have it listed here. And I'm gonna, so this is the page I was referring to, but I'm just zooming in. This is a letter from us. So in Briggs, they were missing your agreement, the supplemental conditions. Oh, sorry, sorry. Can you see it now?
Uh, not quite. There it is.
Okay, so, so this is the letter. And so these, in this bullet point here, this is a list of all of the different requirements. So. There was the agreement between the town and the contractor supplemental conditions. And then multiple different certificates, which these are mandated as part of work, public work in Massachusetts. And then Thompson and Lickner had a very similar list of missing. They were not missing as many, but they were missing most.
Is this common?
It isn't that common. I mean, these are really, these forms are pretty straightforward forms, you know.
Yeah, I've been on the other end of these and before we would send anything out, we'd go down. And make sure that we did everything. This is just weird.
It, it happens. I, I've worked for a firm and the marketing person forgot one of those letters and. Got really yelled at by the owner of the company. So, you know, it happens.
So we have, we have a bid form or tabulation where we went through every single one of these items and we can, we got six bids. And we had other bids that had all of them. And the allowance does, you know, if, if somebody had been missing one form. The regulation allows for, you know, a, a simple oversight. But we talked at length, you know, Mike Edwards and Kristen Lass, as well as. We, we've talked about this in particular. We were very concerned because it's not just one form. It was a significant quantity of forms. And these are two major companies.
Yeah, that's what concerns me. Just it's.
I, I don't know if at the same day our bid was due, was there some other bid due?
Okay.
Not sure.
I, I'm not so much concerned about Thompson, like since they're not that much under the other bid. Just it, it. I would have been fired.
Yeah.
It's business. You can't, you know, they made a mistake. They won't make that mistake again. They may have had a new person in that day putting together the paperwork. You never know.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not our job to question it.
I, I understand.
We have good reasons they can't protest because we have strong reasons.
Okay.
And if we let them, and if we let them because we like the price, then we have, then we look bad by letting.
I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not second guessing the conclusion. I'm just trying to understand the process as a newbie. That's all. Thank you.
So I can turn it back over because I think these need to be dealt with as two individual items. And I'll, so I'll turn it back over. Maybe Mike, if you want to take it from here, we need two different votes.
Do we want to just do them individually then?
I think for clarity and for paperwork, it might be better if you do them individually.
Yeah, so.
Should we vote on the second one first?
We can do that.
Because the first one puts us over our budget?
Well, we, we would always have contingency to approve that. Why don't we just go down in order? Because I, I think that we could still approve it even if it's over the budget. We would just have to make a budget adjustment. Be my understanding of that. Or just shuffle contingency money to cover it, but it's something we have to do. So. I think that we're okay to vote on that. Does anyone have any objections to that? Okay, then can we have a motion to approve the award or the recommendation? To the select board for the twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars based on the lowest qualified bid.
So moved.
Second.
That was Chris and Nancy.
You two always speak the fastest. Dirks, I, Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
Secor.
Hi.
Segal.
I.
Seal.
I.
Cook. I.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
Hi.
Haddon.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Wimberg.
Hi.
And Zagowitz is not here. Twelve zero zero.
Okay, window roofing, testing not to exceed fifty thousand and transfer thirty-five from contingency. So moved.
Second.
Oh, Glenn and Mary Ann. Okay, here we go. Dirks, I, Fleckner.
I.
Roach.
I.
Secor.
Hi.
Segal.
I.
Seal.
I.
Cook.
I.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
Hi.
Haddon.
Hi.
Roberts.
I.
Wimberg.
Hi.
Twelve zero zero.
Before we do the final vote on D, Ellen, I know we said we'd get back to this when we got to the budget. Just sharing my opinion on the insurance. I don't think we should put anything to the budget for insurance other than the raw. Liability coverage that we have. Because my understanding is that budget would be covering the, I think it was the professional. What was it? The builder's risk maybe with the, I forget exactly which policy we as the town own. But I believe that cost is covering that policy alone. So I don't think we should skew that insurance budget with other potential costs. I think we should either create a new line item. Or move that somewhere else. That's my opinion.
Builders. I can, I can do that. Yeah, absolutely. And, and that's. So maybe I'll have you vote on the Amplifund and then we can just look. Because I, I really need the joint committee to understand how I'm posting and agree. To the methodology and I can, you know.
Let's do that. Let's vote on the Amplifund and then under the new business, we can just have a quick conversation and close the loop. So let's, can we have a motion to approve the Amplifund? As section D for the value of one thirty-nine, two ninety-eight and sixty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Dirks, I, Fleckner.
I.
Roach. Decor.
Hi.
Segal.
I.
Seal.
I.
Cook.
I.
Isleton.
Hi.
Karpinski.
Hi.
Haddon.
Hi.
Roberts.
I.
Wimberg.
Hi.
Twelve zero zero. And that was Eugene, right, who seconded it?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so budget.
So. This is the summary sheet from the accounts where I'm posting the warrants that you're approving. And. Right now, bidding is negative only because that was handled, that was handled by CHA Consulting. But not under their. Their unique contract. So the discrete contract with CHA Consulting is on the second row, the nine forty-five. Five ninety-five. Right now, anything in blue font is a number that. Is changing. And what I can do, Mike, given your input, is add. You know, water monitoring as a separate row at the bottom and move money out of contingency. To cover the twelve thousand seven fifty.
Would it also?
Yes.
Well, I'd say, would it be too difficult to? Create an extra column on this and would have original budget, revised budget, and then expended?
I think, I, I honestly think that the original budget is now so far from. You know, Jennifer and I could talk about that, but I think the original budget is so outdated now. That it won't be a helpful.
Well, Mike, don't you mean just you want to see what's changed since the last time we?
Yeah, so more of a revision. So where you see blue Hunter Construction is changing. That's probably because of some of these recent change orders that we're issuing them.
That's exactly right.
It'd be helpful to see, for example, previous budget twenty million five hundred thirty thousand and then the new budget is. Twenty million five hundred thirty-six, just to show what, and for example, when you're doing that water line. You could show appropriated last month like zero, and then you could show new addition. It should still give us the appropriate. Just something along those lines.
I can do that as long as we're looking at the rows that I've created here. I absolutely can do that. So. So. Right now.
This is just the high level budget for the complete project really is what you're tracking here. It's not meant to be a detailed budget assignment.
Right, although I could show you detail from the posting anytime you wanted and you're. And you're exactly right, Mike. As the proposed change orders are approved, the Hutter Construction appropriation is going up, and the contingency, which is tied to it, is going down. So so just so you know, that's why those two rows are in blue. And when we look at the offsets in the rectangle below, we're seeing the original grant, we've received 60% of it through June. The escalation grant, the foundation has fundraised $905,000. They have pledges for more, but 905,000 is what they have in hand. We have legislative support for AV operations, AV equipment in the building. The aggregated interest will continue to increase monthly. And then the mass save incentives are blue, and the CPA grant application is blue because we won't put in an application until December. And I will be starting to work on that actually by the end of this month. So I can, I can edit these. I, I absolutely can show, you know, original appropriation, revised appropriation, and add a row for water monitoring.
Yeah, whatever's easiest for you, Ellen, even if it's not an extra column just to show that. Because the other thing I was just thinking of is you almost could create a line item. Because we don't want to make this thing continue to grow and become 40 line items long. It's kind of defeating the purpose. But you can almost create a non-Hutter construction line item where it's like non-Hutter or internal, like if we get something else like the water work or something else that can just add to that line item, you know, non-GC construction costs. That way we just, and then we can just add them there as they come up.
Okay.
Jean, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I, I've been wanting to ask the same thing, Mike, that you asked for another column that says change since last time for each of those rows. But I'd like to also see it for the library project offsets. I mean, even if it's just a column on the right side that says, you know, plus 20,000, minus 30,000, whatever, for like the foundation fundraising. I'd like to know how it's changed this month, since last month. And.
I honestly don't know because I don't, I don't handle those accounts, Jean.
Where do you get this information from?
Well, the foundation votes on it the third week of the month. So I wouldn't have updated information. The foundation funds aren't really coming through any of these town committees. So.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying for like each of these line items, the, the, the bottom line, I'd love to know when you say revised taxpayer total, what was it before? What is it now? So if every month or even quarterly, if this thing is updated quarterly, we don't need to know every single month, but it would be nice to see how something has increased or decreased, especially the taxpayer total.
So what, what will increase is fundraising and the interest earned on the bond. Well, on the grant account. Under the grant obligations, we have to keep the grant dispersments in a separate interest earning account. We're tracking that interest with each month and each Amplifund report, and we're able to spend that interest on the grant. So the, the three items that have a date next to them are the ones that are changing. You know, as we get a foundation report and as I get a report from Bartholomew Trust Funds on, on the interest on the grant account, which we had to create. They're not, a lot of these aren't going to change.
Does the taxpayer total change?
It, it is the, these debits deducted from the total budget above. Yes, the, those, these are linked. So everything we see in the square is a debit, which is being deducted from the total budget of 32.5.
I, I think, Ellen, a simple way we could do this is like if you put on the far right, monthly plus minus. And then all you, all we could just do is like on contingency, you could show a negative 20,000. On Hutter, you could show positive 20,000. And then if there was something that just shows any change to the revised taxpayer total, it, it could just be blank, you know? Or if there's been a variance. So if you just had a column on the right that just stretched down and said monthly change and just acknowledged, I, I think what Jean brings up is a good point is we don't really need to worry too much about those individual lines. But if the revised taxpayer number changes up or down, we should just note if there's been a delta. When we have that information.
Understand that there's not going to be grant funds awarded under the CPA until late spring, and there won't be mass save incentive funds until the construction is complete and one year post occupancy. So those, those are not going to be changing, unlike the three items that right now have.
Yeah, I don't think we need a plus minus column for anything other than the top where it creates the 32 million budget. So those from bidding down to technology, and then just an overall for the revised taxpayer total. So hypothetically, if the taxpayer total when we had our next meeting was 23 million, we should document that there was an increase of 600,000.
So I think this is something that Jennifer, Ellen and I can probably work on offline. Perhaps get the chair of the library board of trustees, you might draft before the next meeting to see if we're on the same page.
Yeah, or I can just mark something up and send you back what I was thinking as well.
Sounds good. That would be helpful, I think, because I.
I'll send it to you, Ellen.
I think this is not going to be as changeable as you're feeling. A lot of, a lot of these deductions are, are in the distant future.
Yep, and Tom, you had a question?
Yeah, I, are you trying to get Mike on? To me, I'm trying to figure out what number do I look at to see if we're on target?
Yeah.
That, I think that's, you know, I, I'm getting lost inside of the minutia a bit. And I understand that the library project offsets, yeah, there's some black, excuse me, I don't want to call it black magic, but there's some time variant thing going on there about the grants and so forth. And I assume that there's a plan here because we asked the town for a certain amount of money for this project. And it's one of the things I think we are charged with as in looking at these numbers is to see whether or not we are on target budget wise. And to be blunt, I can't tell. I mean, I think I looked through everything and I think other than the contingency, you know, I was started looking for revisions. And, you know, I, what number do I look at to see, okay, yeah, we're on target and we're still within budget?
And, and this might be too much information in the spreadsheet to answer that question. I wonder if there might be a graphical technique to, to show that, you know, some very simplified information.
Yeah.
With two different colored lines of what we, what we anticipated and what reality is. And maybe just like one simple graph will answer that question.
And I think our OPM can, can really help Ellen with this because I'm sure Jennifer, you see these every, all the time.
I, I can do anything, but I will continue to post your bills. My, my big obligation here is to be sure that we're keeping track of the bills and that you're approving them and that they're being posted. So I think Jennifer and Kristen and I can, we can come up with something that, again, there was a huge budget shift once we knew exactly what construction, the construction contract came in. We, we had a very, we, we had a truly draft budget under the former OPM. And so this is much closer to the known, the known contracts and the known obligations that.
I think there's two things going on here. There is the issue whether or not we're on target for the contracts as bid, as bid. But we're also looking at, and please, let's not ever have to do this. Do we need to go back for more money to the town meeting? And that's sort of what number is that? Because I thought, you know, I thought when we got the bids, we were very happy.
Well, at the moment, we're talking about saving taxpayers 10,100, 10 million 100,000 dollars. We are, we are coming in.
That, that's wonderful. Where's that number?
Yeah, we just want to see it. We just want to see a graph. Anything.
I, I think we don't want to go over complicated, we, you know, for what the intent is. This is just a snapshot to say, here's the budget. But Ellen, I will mark something up on what I'm thinking. We can kind of table it for now. I'll send you a thought. I know you and Kristen will talk, and then we can reconvene at the next meeting and kind of review what we're thinking to kind of close that up. But for the short term, I would see insurance, just in my opinion, should go into a separate bucket.
I can absolutely do that. I'll look forward to that because I think something visual will be helpful, Mike.
Okay.
I don't think we have anything else on the agenda. So does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, who's taking control? Tom, I'm putting you.
I got in there first.
All right, second.
Second. Jean, second.
Jean, thank you. Here's the voting. Derek's eye, Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach.
Aye.
Decore.
Aye.
Seagull.
Aye.
Deal.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Rupinski.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Lindbergh.
Aye.
It passed 12 0 0 and 7 33.
All right.
Right, everyone.